I still haven't yet to read it.
Good morning. We're here for our regularly scheduled county commissioner meeting. It's Wednesday, October 29th. It's 9:00 a.m. and we have a full slate of commissioners. We have our administrator, Mr. Danzel, and our clerk of the board, Teresa. And at this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise and join in the pledge.
I, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the adoption of the current agenda.
Move to approve agenda as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moves us down to public comment. Is there anybody in the room for public comment or anybody on the phones? Nobody on the phones. I don't see nobody coming to the mic. That'll move us down to the approval of the consent agenda. I believe there are ten items on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of consent agenda items one through ten as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, for the ten items on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moves us down to regular business and it's a certificate of appreciation for Mr. Lynn Hall. And I'd like to take the time here. Excuse me?
Come forward.
Yes, please come forward, Mr. Hall. Today, we are honored to present a certificate of appreciation to Mr. Lynn Hall for his exceptional commitment and contribution to the Franklin County Water Conservancy Board. Lynn has served on the Conservancy Board since September of 2008, first as an alternate member and beginning in 2011 as a full commissioner. Over these years, he has brought valuable insight, consistency, dedication to the stewardship of the county's water resources. His service has helped ensure that water, one of the most valuable precious assets, continues to be managed responsibly for future generations. Although Lynn has chosen not to reapply for another term, his years of dedication and leadership will have a lasting impact. On behalf of the Franklin County Commissioners, we extend our heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for his many years of faithful service. Thank you, Lynn, for your commitment and contributions to Franklin County. And I encourage you, if you have a few words to say, just say them in the mic there. Please.
It's been a pleasure to be able to serve. We've accomplished a lot within the county and within the state. The state, I went up to Spokane once to check in their office about a matter, and they had a pile of paper about like this of pending water movements, water applications, things like this. So the state actually came forth and said, there's got to be a better way, and that's when they started the water conservancy boards. But over the years, I've had a great pleasure of working with great people and serving as on the board, and I've appreciated the efforts that have been made to do so.
That's a sign of a great leader is when he sheds all of the credit to other people. And that's, I wish you would continue on, sir. Any commissioners would like to add anything?
Just want to say thank you for your commitment to the conservation board and appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, for your long dedicated service to Franklin County.
All right, that moves us down to Commissioner Administrator updates. Mr. Danzel.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and if I may say thank you to Mr. Hall too. And maybe this would be something that the board would like for us, the pictures and a little write-up on our Facebook page possibly.
Great idea.
Very good. All right. I think we need to do a little bit more about that. I'm going to do better at taking pictures for things like that. And you could tell that that gentleman really cared and understood the issues that were brought to him. And just a huge thank you. So, as you all know, met with you all individually to discuss the agenda. I met with Eric Johnson to discuss the Hapo Center and the ILA with Pasco. I met with Wes McCart, Director of Planning, Building and Economic Development, to discuss current and future issues and needs, one of which you'll see just a little bit later on here in the agenda. Met with IS to discuss various issues. And I, there, you will be seeing the issue with the cameras in the Commissioner's office taken care of. Just wanted to keep you updated on that. Met with the Accounting Division of the Auditor's Office to discuss the budget as well as financial policies that you'll be seeing later on today. And then officially we'll be having a hearing on, on the 5th of November. I attended the BCES and BI Penn meeting. A reminder, and this is, you all tell me if you're some, if we aren't able to attend and you'd like me to sit in for you, just kind of give me a heads up. But a reminder that the Shoreline Reconvenance Meeting between the major five is taking place tomorrow. And what I wanted to do is I wanted to pass along some, an email that I received from the group. You can take one and pass one down. And I think it'll explain what they might be looking for. But what is happening is there's a meeting prior to the bigger meeting to just encapsulate everybody's wishes, desires, what they want, priorities to see happen here. And the reason I included this is a great example of what we should be shooting for. On the first page, you can see that the lady's explaining what is going on. But on the second page, you'll see like what priorities are important to that city. And so if the, twofold. Number one, let me know whatever your concerns are. That meeting takes place tomorrow. And then number two, the issue is if you'd like me to attend it and represent Franklin County, or if one of the commissioners would like to attend it. So just looking for a little feedback there. And then the final two, they're probably gonna, I'm gonna ask you to amend the agenda. The first one would be that I would ask the board to delegate authority to me to seek and enter into contract negotiations with a human resources director. And I think that the way that you would do that would be by way of a motion, so you would add that as an action item. And the other one that I would ask for your direction on is the tax title properties. So if you could, if you are supportive of those measures, if you could add both to the agenda and do a motion and take action on them, then I'll have a way to move forward with both of those. That is really the gist of my administrator's update. I do know that we are going to have a need for a very short, I believe, executive session under potential litigation later on.
Okay. Commissioner Baumann?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also attended the BCES board meeting. And at that meeting, they passed their 2026 budget. So appreciated the presentation and the, them holding the belt tight, I guess is the simplest way to put that. Of course, we had a closed session, I believe, on Monday, where we were working on negotiations with one of our bargaining groups. Went to the City of Pasco Council meeting and wanted specifically to thank Peter Harpster for his service to our community. Peter Harpster was the at-large candidate on the Pasco City Council. And due to some changes in his personal life, he resigned from council. That was effective Sunday night. And so I believe that the city will be looking for somebody to appoint to, to that position, the at-large role. And so just thank you to Peter Harpster for his service to our community. Also, the, the city council on Monday night got a, got a presentation from Basin Disposal on rates and just they, it was a kind of, it was a broad presentation, talked about some of the, the laws that are coming down the pipe that the legislators put in place from requiring curbside pickup of recyclables, green waste, different things, just some of the stuff that's happening. And, and so I wonder if, if we should have that presentation from them before too long. I think that might be good. And meeting at the Hapo, meeting with Eric Johnson, our consultant, meeting with the PA's office, agenda meeting with our administrator, numerous phone calls. And with that, I'll leave that as my report. Do you have some comments on the, our administrator's update whenever we get to that point?
Commissioner Mullen?
So yes, met with Eric Johnson, also had the agenda meeting with our county administrator. I also received a call complimenting the grounds here at the courthouse. And he said they look excellent. And I, he goes, I just wanted to pass that on to whoever's responsible, that they're doing a great job. And I, I have to agree with them. The courthouse grounds look fantastic. Also had a chamber meeting, Pasco Chamber, Ag Hall of Fame. They're looking for recommendations if you want to submit any to them for that recognition anyways. So, and that concludes my report.
My last week consisted of the Columbia River Policy Advisory Group meeting, a closed session meeting with our attorney on some negotiations, pre-agenda meeting, which again, I want to thank Mr. Danzel and Mr. McCart for meeting with me every, every week that I am able to do it. And I appreciate your input and I appreciate your time and getting this, our meetings are going so smoothly these days that it's, it's refreshing. It really is. Met with Eric Johnson about the Hapo Center and some really good stuff there. I want to thank Eric for his, his work on that. He did a thorough job going through the history of everything that's going on and really keeping us abreast of where we're at with that and what we need to be attentive to. So I really appreciate Eric Johnson. Yesterday, I had workforce development meeting. And in that meeting, we got recognized by Cynthia Garcia for our actions during the meeting with all the special needs kids in the courthouse. And she was so moved by what we did there, by just engaging and treating human beings with dignity and respect that she said she got emotional and she cried. And I got to compliment my other commissioners for getting up and going out and, and interacting with these kids that are, you know, potential is all there. And it was, and Mr. Danzel, you got up and we all went out. And it was, it was a neat experience. And out there in Eltopia, inland tarp has a tarp out there, right there at Merrill's Corner. And I drive by it all the time there. And I look at it, and it says, "No act of kindness ever is wasted." And I hold that close to my heart because that's the way we need to treat every human being, even prisoners in the jail, with dignity and respect. I know that they don't always treat our, our J, our, our command staff there and that they don't treat you with dignity and respect. But we've got to treat them with dignity and respect and everybody that interacts with us. And I thank my commissioners for that day because it, I guess it made it quite an impact. And then I want to say that to Mr. Erdman, coming in this morning, man, that is a nice roadway you put in front of Lamb Weston. But it's pretty evident when we hit the city limits and Pasco's responsibility is like going through, going through, through a brand new highway to a combat zone. And I was hoping Pasco might follow your lead and do the same thing. Hopefully they will.
So I gotta say something, I gotta say something to that. So I, this is no joke. I got two phone calls about that. One of the phone calls recommended that we put a sign and that said, something to the effect of, something, "Thank you for visiting Franklin County. You are now leaving our jurisdictional limits and, and road maintenance." And anyway, something to the effect of that you're, this section of roadway is not ours now.
Yes.
Anyways, good job. That's beautiful.
And that sign's already there. It says, "Entering City of Pasco city limits." It's right there. I noticed it this morning. But Craig, great, nice job. That is a beautiful roadway. And it's going to last because he put two lifts on that road. But I encourage you to get up there between self-landing and the squats. Some bad spots there. We need to probably do two lifts there. We'll get you the funding. You're getting there, Craig. Thank you. And that ends my report. We're down to correspondence, planning and economic development, request to hire a long-range natural resource planner, grant funded.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Oh.
Could we have a couple of comments before that?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. He asked for some input into what, what's part of his report. I've been the one attending the Shoreline Reconvenance Meetings. And I would absolutely love it if, if, if we would ask Brian to represent us at that meeting. I think the, I think that the progress on that has somewhat stalled a little bit. And I think that he has a lot of potential to, to help that get back on track. And it would be my recommendation that we ask him to represent us and, and be at that meeting on our behalf.
That's, best man for the job. And then I think we've got to amend the agenda too.
Whoa, that was my voice. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we amend the agenda to add two potential action items.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, to amend the agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 So, Mr. Chairman, I would add two potential action items. I would like to add to the agenda, authority for our administrator to enter into contract negotiations for an HR manager. And the second item would be to ask our administrator to work with the treasurer and prepare for next week that we declare one of the tax title properties as public property and transfer that into the full control and ownership of Franklin County.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, to add two action items, the authority for our, our administrator to engage with HR manager contract negotiations and for the treasurer to put our tax title property into full authority of Franklin County. So there's been a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the first one would be the authority for our administrator.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move on the items that we just put on the agenda. I would move to authorize our administrator to enter contract negotiations on our behalf with an HR. You're up.
HR what?
HR manager.
Thank you. Second.
Thank you, Rocky, for making sure we got it straight. HR manager. There's been a motion, a second, for our administrator to engage with contract negotiations with an HR manager. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And, Mr. Chairman, I move to instruct our administrator to work with our treasurer to prepare for next week to declare a tax title property as surplus property and to transfer it into the hands of Franklin County.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, for the authority for our administrator to meet with the treasurer to declare one of our surplus properties as, as a, one of our tax title properties as surplus and put it in control of Franklin County. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Takes us down to correspondence.
Yes.
This is Wes McCart.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I was going to point out, you, you do have the letter from Wes McCart that's been provided to you. I also wanted to provide you, gentlemen, with a, a letter from PERC, the Public Employment Relations Commission. And if you could kind of read that, review it at your leisure. But the correspondence from Mr. McCart, you're very knowledgeable of. It's a grant-funded position that goes hand in hand with being able to not only stay up to date on the comprehensive plan update, but also just ongoing operations. And third, and maybe, maybe most importantly here, also help with economic development and satisfy our economic development requirements under the statutes.
Do we need, is this an action item that we need to?
You, you can either take action on this today, add, you know, another agenda item, take action on it today. I believe, could they do it by consensus? Would that be? To add a, a position for Wes at planning, grant funded. It's a hiring freeze. Would a motion be better?
A motion probably would be better.
Okay, you can do that today. You could do it next week. But the need's going to be there.
If we do it today, we got to amend the, the agenda again.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't believe we do. We've done it, we've done it numerous times. Mr. Chairman, I move to, to grant the request of our Planning and Economic Development Director to hire a long-range and natural resources planner as was presented to us.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, for our Planning and Building Director to hire a long, hire a long-range natural resource planner. Is there any further discussion?
Just want to point out that we've discussed this at length. And this is a grant-funded position and definitely necessary for our comprehensive update that has the, the climate elements attached to it. That's additional burden on, on the office, Wes's office, for all the, the efforts it takes there. And am, am happy to vote on this today.
And I will say that it is on our agenda. It's been correspondence and it is put out there plainly on our agenda. So I think we're good on making this motion. So all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Takes us down to public comment. Is there anybody for public comment? Anybody on the phone? Nope. Any need for an executive session?
Yeah, there will be a, a need for a brief executive session under, I believe, potential litigation for, so RMCW 42.30.110 subsection one subsection, sub-sub-I. And for, is 10 minutes going to be enough?
10 minutes enough.
10 minutes. And I would ask that it's Counsel Lloyd, the three commissioners, myself, Director Erdman, and Director McCart.
And I would just ask that everybody remain silent until the mics and the video are completely off because we can stay in this room now that we can shut these cameras off and we'll have our executive session here. Okay, so at this time, we'll recess into executive session at 9:23 to give us time to turn off the cameras. We'll come out at 9:33. We'll come out at 9:33.
We've come out of executive session. We're going to recess back into executive session for five minutes. Hearing none, we will adjourn our commissioner meeting and if permitting, commissioners will move right into the workshop. Need a break? Anybody?
I may, I'm having technical difficulties here for being able to get on.
Get it five minutes and I'll go get a cup of coffee.
Yeah, five minute recess.
We'll take a five minute recess and we'll come back and start our workshop.
They were talking about how fast they drink coffee. I'm like, I'm sitting here asking my wife, does it get old? Does it grow mold? Does all have a cup of-
It'll grow mold.
Yeah, I'll have a coffee, coffee lasts me three or four days.
It will grow mold. I, I'm gonna go up to Elk Can, sometimes we forget to take the filter out and you go up there the next time and there's mold growing over the coffee grounds that had already been burnt.
Come back from recess and at this time, I will call the workshop to order and ask for approval of the workshop agenda.
Who's to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Been a motion, a second to approve the workshop agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is public comment. Is there anybody that would like to comment on either of the two topics on the workshop that we have before us? Anybody on the phones? Nobody coming forward? We'll move into first workshop agenda item, spending freeze presented by Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. You'd asked me in previous meetings to look at a spending freeze. I want to pass this down so that you gentlemen have a copy of a draft resolution I put together. We can, if Clerk Alvarez, if we could send the draft resolution and policy to all the elected officials and department heads, I think that would be the best thing to do is they're not going to take any action on this. So, spending freeze, ensuring fiscal stability. There's, before I get started on this, I'd just like to say that in my, I did a lot of research on this. I looked at other counties that have done spending freezes in the past and I'll have some comments at the end, but this is basically what I think I gleaned from you all in our meeting. So you tell me and let me know, give me direction on what you think we should be doing here. Here is the legal basis. The Board of Commissioners has a legal duty and a statutory duty to manage county finances under thirty-six forty. Personal liability, so thirty-six forty point one three oh holds county officials personally liable for expenditures that exceed adopted budget appropriations. The fiscal reality is the county's facing material shortfall in projected revenue and significant unexpected expenditure increases. And I think that your goal here is to actively mitigate the risk of exceeding the adopted budget and protect the county's long-term financial stability. Does that sound about right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so in doing so, this is the areas that we could take a look at and that other counties have done. Key areas that might be subject to the freeze would be obviously hiring, non-essential travel, discretionary purchasing. The amounts change and vary, I don't know, five hundred if that's what you're looking at or a thousand or twenty-five hundred, but it's doable, it's legal. New or renewed contracts, this is sort of kind of already taken care of with the signature policy, but obviously the execution of anything that would bind us to any expenditure would be at this time prohibited. And obviously capital expenditures would be prohibited as well or suspended for the time being. Exemptions to the, to the freeze would be anything for the public safety and health, expenses that are needed for the immediate protection of life, public health and safety, obviously. Statutory mandates that are, we need to follow that are required by either federal state law, court order, existing collective bargaining agreements that would have to be taken into consideration. Revenue generation expenses that are necessary to directly generate revenue or secure grants for the county. I think those are pretty self-explanatory on why you would want to give an exemption to that. If they're, if an outfit or if a department is looking for an exception, this is how that would work. It's very similar to the way that exceptions are made for the hiring freeze. It would just be the exact same process. So you'd get in correspondence, be acted upon, after I reviewed it, it would be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners. No expenditure subject to this freeze shall be committed prior to receiving explicit approval from the Board of County Commissioners via resolution or motion, so you would have to motion on that. Kind of the key points here, all department heads and elected officials would be responsible for adhering to this policy. The freeze would be effective and remain in effect until either through the resolution you told me a date that you wanted it to be lifted or if you wanted to keep it on indefinitely and then take it off when we get to a better financial position. Reporting, the county auditor will provide a monthly report to the B O C C detailing budget expenditures and tracking all approved exceptions during the freeze period. That's what this would be requiring. And, pardon me, it would be, you need to review your departmental spending immediately and prepare to submit necessary exception requests before incurring any prohibited costs. So questions and answers and also next steps. Couple things and considerations that I wanted to give you so that you're aware. The first thing is, is if you, if you do this on a county-wide basis, it'll be a clerical nightmare. So if you don't make the amount high enough, there will, your consent agenda will be, you know, eight pages long probably, so just beware of that, that it could be more work and it could be more for all involved, both on the folks that are requesting to spend the funds and also on the side of the folks that are, us that are trying to put it on the agenda and get it before you gentlemen. My recommendation would be to have this go through the entire county family, through all the different elected officials, department heads, and be ready for, you're probably going to have some comments that it's not very popular, this sort of thing isn't. But another way that we could tackle this, and this would be something that I would, I would recommend, is allow me to work with the county auditors and the accounting staff and the auditors to look at historical trends on line items so that it doesn't, we're not hitting the entire county with that brush, but we're able to target where there have been issues in the past and that we, for lack of a better word, sequester various line items that have been shown to historically have problems or need transfers at the end of the year. I think it would accomplish basically the same thing while allowing the county to continue onward. But of course, we can do either, either way. We could do a complete freeze like we talked about, which would go back to this right here, the five hundred dollars, you know, anything over that are prohibited. The other thing to keep in mind too is that I believe that a lot of the other elected officials do already have some of the exceptions that we were talking about, so not to be taken by surprise. I know that we've got Judge Roscoe sitting in the back there. So not only do, does the judge operate off of a lot of grants, there would also be statutory mandates that fall underneath that. And so anyway, just trying to get a grasp on exactly what we're looking to do here and I, just looking for some, maybe some feedback and direction from you gentlemen if we wanted to do just an across-the-board, everybody has to stick to five hundred or less, or do you want me to look at a kind of a more calculated and kind of more with a scalpel and look at areas that might be of major concern? And so just need a little bit more direction. We can't act on this today because it's a workshop anyway and also I think it's good practice to let, especially something like this, that's going to affect every single department and elected official, have enough time to, at least for them to digest it. We may not like it, we may not like what folks have to say. That's going to be, I think, that's a common, that's a common, just a give and take honestly with any county government is that you all are in control of the entire budget, other elected officials are in control of their budget and so are department heads to a certain degree and lesser degree. So it, I think we have options. I think we could do a cross-the-board freeze or I think we could do a more targeted, calculated one that I think will get to the same idea that you're looking at without having to put really Teresa and Jen as well as all the other offices through unnecessary and undue steps. So both are possible. I think that one is preferable over the other and then finally you just tell me what you're looking for and we can make it happen.
Commissioners? Thoughts, questions?
So, I appreciate your, the part where that you would like to run it around to all the different departments and kind of get their perspective on it and, and then, probably don't have this information, but what is the impacts of some of these? So just looking at these different categories, non-essential travel. Do we know what that is throughout the year? You know, that, that equates to sixty thousand dollars or six hundred thousand dollars?
I, you're right, I don't have that now. This would be, you know, like the WASAC that's coming up and then I know the Auditor's Office has a convention later on in the year. So yeah, it would be all, all of those type of expenses, you know, that are tied to conventions and trainings and seminars. I, if you do do this, I would ask that you allow the folks that have already paid the fees, sometimes those fees are non-refundable. I would, I would probably say from like such date forward, you know?
Yeah, so we've already done the hiring freeze.
Yep.
So that's already underway. Discretionary purchasing, I think that that's something where that, as you described, you know, we don't, we don't want it to be where that it's, that it's, we want to be effective, not unduly burdensome. And so I think that's something where that as we go around the county and get perspective and input from the different departments, that that's something that we should, you know, evaluate. Is five hundred the right number or is fifteen hundred the right number? So that's something I think. New or renewed contracts, so we already kind of have taken care of that with, like you described, the signature policy. And then all non-contracted capital projects, can you give a description of what something like that might, what that might be a description of?
Yeah, so anything that hasn't been initiated, where there's no contract that's been let out, it's no building, no improvements to buildings, right in there, no equipment replacement and non-emergency vehicle purchases are suspended. So it's kind of, goes hand in hand with just what your capital expenditures would normally be, but you would just freeze all of that. So if somebody was in the middle of something, for example, if it was already contracted and they've already, they're halfway through, that would be finished. But anything that hasn't been initiated or initiated probably would have been a better word there, capital projects, equipment replacement and non-emergency vehicle purchases would be suspended. Up to or, and again, that's up to you, that'd be your determination on how we do all of this. This is what I've seen in other areas.
Yeah, I like this, this next page, the exemptions and exceptions process that I appreciate that laid out. I'd love to know if Wes has any ideas or the judge is here, I'd love to know if they have any perspective on this. This is a workshop, I'd love, if the chairman's willing, to invite them to come and give us some ideas or some perspective on it.
After the commissioners have their questions and yes. Commissioner Mullen, you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, it looks good to me.
My question, couple of questions. The B, Board of County Commissioners deems it necessary to implement immediately, so what happens between this week and next week when we implement it if there's a slew of activity?
Yeah, I, so there's always that risk.
Yep. And the other thing is, by county, we have by-county agreements and this doesn't incorporate anything with by-county or does it?
Well, no, so those are a little bit different in that the majority of the by-county agreements we have, the lead agency, if you will, is Benton County. And so this would only apply to only Franklin County, only entities, employees, departments, officials.
Okay.
Yeah.
All righty, those are my only two questions. Now I'd encourage anybody that would like to come forward and speak on this from the county department heads or electors.
So I'll pop in my two cents worth, I guess. I, I think it's a good idea moving forward. I, I would agree with Administrator Danzel that, you know, some of the things that have already been done, I know like I've already made commitments to go to two different things. One's on a wildfire, which is part of the climate element I have to implement, that's out of county. The other is the WASAC conference, which I've already paid the fee for. So just give you a couple of examples and I don't believe that fee is refundable at this point, most of it, so. But as far as discretionary funding, you know, I'm just going to tell you that, you know, five hundred probably is not bad. I think the biggest question you're going to get is what's discretionary and what's not. You know, sometimes our electric bill can be over five hundred bucks. You know, sometimes our electric bill can be over 500 bucks for our building, but I wouldn't consider that to be discretionary. So I think having some examples of what the discretionary is might be there. And then there's, where this is touching your budget, I would be asking the question of whether or not it requires a hearing to, to implement this. I, I don't know one way or another, but generally if you're going to do something and affect somebody's spending authority that's already been approved, there's an opportunity for the public to weigh in on this. I know time is of the essence, we're getting close to the end of the year, but that would be my concern. Again, I don't think 500 for discretionary is, is, is all that bad of a number. Sometimes that extra burdened. I know I, I passed, as a county commissioner, I passed a budget one year by line item. And yeah, it was kind of a nightmare for everybody, but I think it got everybody thinking about every line that they had, and we came out of that much, much better at the end of that one year. So sometimes you have to go through a little bit of heartburn to come out the other side. So I would encourage you to, to implement this. So you have a little more control right now and, and can be there, but it would be good to have example of what discretionary, what you're thinking is discretionary.
Thank you. I always appreciate your, your perspective, Wes.
Morning.
Morning.
So I think I'm kind of on the same page, I'd just like some more, short, some more specifics, because right now we do have a number of grants which have been approved, and is that going to prohibit us from spending under the grant, which we're required to do in order to keep the money? There's also...
No, it will not.
So we're going to be okay there? Travel, we already have a conference scheduled, which shouldn't prohibit, but there is another conference that we're required to attend under the grant in order to keep the grant, which was not be until July, but still something that I want to make sure that we're okay with. Required to have at least three team members attend in order to report that back to AOC.
And that's under grant also?
It's under the grant, right.
I think.
But just, you know, if we're going to start sending in submitting these and people say, ooh, that's not right.
What I'm, what we're trying to hopefully accomplish here is, our sales tax revenues are, we're closing in on 600,000, short. And so we're just trying to keep a tight, tight lid on...
No, and I agree. I, we got to get where we need to get, but I just want to make sure that we're not here wasting everyone's time, because time is also money. There's some grants that I was looking at applying for, and now I don't want to waste my time applying for them if we're not going to be able to implement them, because some of them are matching grants. So if that's something that we shouldn't apply for, if I said send it to the county administrator and say, yeah, give it a shot, or don't, that would be helpful. I don't want to waste hours completing the application for no reason.
Expenses are necessary to directly generate revenue or secure grants for the county.
And I, the match portion is what I'm kind of concerned about. So maybe I'll just send it on, just so we're clear. And then, the software renewals, I know that there's a lot of software renewals that may not be grant-funded, and I want to make sure that we're able to renew those without any sort of issue, which I think are pretty costly. So, just my two cents, I understand we're in a situation where we need to save money, I just want to make sure that when we need to do so, we can spend the money necessary, whether it be asking for permission, which I think might be a mess, but, so we can get there.
Oh, good questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. I think that, that, well, I just, I really appreciate our administrator, as you've worked hard on some of these things and some of the questions that we've asked, I know that, that it is, it has been, you know, top of mind that we don't want to do any layoffs or furloughs or anything like that, if there's any way possible. And I think this is a responsible and a, and a proper step in this process, and so thank you for that. And I think that, it would, it would be my opinion that, that we ask our administrator to prepare a, you know, a proposal next week and between now and then, you know, the input that he hears from other counties to try to, to try to, you know, put that, put that in such a format that, that, you know, he feels that it's, you know, taking the concerns into consideration, and then maybe in the public meeting next week, if, if it's, you know, there's a portion that needs to be wrestled on a little bit, that we do that, but be prepared next week to, to adopt something of this nature.
I agree. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this? Mr. Danzel?
I think the only thing is, I'd like for maybe Mr. Briggs, Council Briggs and Council Lloyd to look at the posting requirements, as Wes said. If, if we really do need a post for two weeks, then we've got to post for two weeks. If we don't have to, then I can make that possible.
And, and the other thing that we need to clarify is the grant that Ms. Roscoe about matching funds. And I think that if it's a requirement, I think it's something that we need to allow the matching funds for those, if they, for those grant, rent funds to go to those conferences.
I agree with you, and I, I think today I was just, it was a lot more broad. I agree with Commissioner Baumann that take the information, the input, and then like make it into something that's really livable and doable and not going to goof us up. My question for you gentlemen, do you want me to stick to this idea of like a $500 spending freeze? Do you want me to meet with the accountants and come back with, do you want me to deliver you a couple of different options? Is that kind of what you're looking at, or you want one?
It would be my opinion that with you and, and the auditor's office, that, that that's where our best recommendation is going to come from.
Yeah.
So I would say that you guys wrestle and, and you bring back a recommendation that we believe this is the proper number.
I agree.
And it may be 500, and it may not be.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, one other thought that Mr. McCart brought before us that I'd like us to evaluate and, and consider is a line item, a line item adoption of, of a budget.
For this coming budget?
That's a, that's going to be a lot of work on our part, certainly the three of us of wrestling through some of that, but I think that that is, that, that's a, something that we should consider and, and would ask you to help us evaluate if we do that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Commissioner and Mr. Chair. I, I don't think there's any way we could do it this year, but you'll remember, when I came in, I actually, I want to do a zero-based budget, which is a line item by line item, at least like once every three years, because it'll keep you more accurate. I don't know that we would be able to do it this year, but absolutely, I, I think that everybody should be aware that for the year 2027's budget, so next year when we're going through this, that we really will be going line item by line item. I think it's a necessity.
So, so kind of just bring me up to speed, what, what's the, the challenge of doing that this year?
The time.
Okay. And so it just, because you're breaking it down and your, your workshops are twice as long?
Yeah, and I'd point out like the county that Wes came from, the county that I came from, there's whole departments that didn't exist, and the budgets about, you know, at least from our neck of the woods, it's four, five, six, seven times. So you got that many more line items to go over, we would have had to have started already. And then you guys would have to agree between now and December the 5th, to basically be here every day to hold hours worth of hearings for every department, to go over each, how many staples are you going to need? You know, how many of this you get, which I think is a worthwhile cause, I just don't think that in this truncated timeframe that we have the ability to do.
I can, I can appreciate that. So I think that we should, we should gear for that to some level by for 2027's budget.
And I'd just like to add too, that Mr. McCart gave me a U.S. Court Appeals ruling on, on water irrigation return flow to the river and what happened there. And I, I do want Mr. McCart to engage in, in water issues, because it is coming to a focal head right now, and Franklin County is an irrigation project, the majority of it, and we got to protect that water right. So I don't want Mr. McCart to feel like we're limiting his venue. We want you to be engaged and keep us informed on water issues, please. You need to be at these conferences for that.
And, and Mr. Commissioners, I would say too, it would make sense in a lot of areas, like Public Works, for example, I think Commissioner Baumann and I spoke about this. It's hard to find a part for a grader that's less than 500 bucks. You might think about exempting certain areas where you just know it's going to be, do you really want to get, you know, 85 consent items from Public Works every week on, can I buy this and can I buy that? So I think there's a way that we can do it that'll be pretty, it'll go after exactly what you're looking at without be, without not making sense.
What's good about our Public Works is they rent those graders, so they have to repair them. The, where they rent them from, so that's, that's the good thing. All right, so if we are good there on that aspect of it, we'll move into our second executive, or our second workshop, which is, I believe, fiscal policies, financial policies, yes. Mr. Danzel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is our financial policies that has been, I think, really well-vetted. Let me get down to the first one. You all gentlemen have, will have, right here as I pass it down, I'm going to pass one to my right and the rest to my left. You gentlemen right here will have what is the finance, are going to be the financial policies, and we can make copies. And again, Ms. Alvarez, I would recommend that we send this to every single department along with the resolution that we're looking at. It's been scheduled for next week's for adoption. What this does is, it takes all of our wishes and desires for the budget process moving forward, and it puts it into one policy. My, my hope is, by the end of the year, that we're able to take this policy and merge it with our state and federal procurement policies and our capital asset inventory record policy, and make it one financial policy. So we'll be trying to cherry pick from them probably to enter into here, but these are necessary and they need to be on the books, so here we go. Policy foundation, upholding fiscal integrity. The purpose here is to provide a mandatory guidance for discharging all financial responsibilities across the county. I'm going to just skip through the legal basis, I think you guys know that the legal, what the legal basis is. This is a guideline, this is not imply any contractual employment rights, and compliance with G A P and the state bar system is required. So that just makes good sense there that we're staying, we're staying up on all the, on all the minimums that are required of us. The budget is a legal instrument and schedule. Here are some key points. The legal function of the budget is the legal document granting authority to incur obligations and pay expenses. Serves as a comprehensive business plan, communications device, and operations guide for all county departments. The county budget's on an annual calendar year basis, and I think that this would be even a potential, Commissioner Baumann, where we put in there language about how we do a zero-based or a line item by line item every third year at least, so that we can track expenses and that we know currently what the cost of doing business is in each given department. So I think I might want to add that as we're just sitting here talking.
So just a, something to consider, something that I think that we need to do in government. In fact, as a member of the Legislative Steering Committee with WASAC, myself and Commissioner Amanda McKinney from Yakima, last year was pushed really hard and was adopted, that results-based criteria in all contracting. And I think that that's something that we need to push for, is that we don't just do something, but we do it with a results requirement attached to it, whatever it is, we do it, you know, with, with the criteria, and the reason we do it is so that we get results, not just to, to cause more issues or cause more work for, you know, one department or another, but that we, that we're doing it with the, with the goal of getting results and the results being more efficient, more effective.
I agree. I totally agree with you. Key timeline steps, you'll know all this. Call for estimates out of the auditor's office, that's when we officially start. Then we've got the filing of estimates by all officials, that's done through our gravity system. When Tim Anderson was sitting here and we were going over the budget, that's what that was, was the gravity system, that the elected officials and department heads enter their budget submissions into. And then final adoption obviously is approved by you gentlemen, hopefully by the 5th of December this year, I believe. This goes over the control and expenditure adjustments, transfers, required to move funds between expenditure categories, that's self-explanatory. B O C C approval is mandatory before the expenditure is incurred. This, again, these are all things that you already know, it's that we finally have put pen to paper and actually made a policy on it. So they're all going to be pretty common sense. We also have a tweak that we have to make after incorporating some comments that were made by I S Director Beckley, to, there's some cleanup, and so that's, again, another reason why we do these workshops, is that we can, we can ferret out any other issues that might, that might be at play here. But these are all just the, the rules, or pardon me, that allow you to do such a thing, but also it kind of tells you what happens if not. So here's a good example. Officials who approve expenditures in excess of budget appropriations face personal liability on their official bonds. So that's one of the reasons that we want a policy to be on the books, is that we want to lay out that you can't just continue to spend and spend and spend and then ask for transfers to cover spending and spend beyond a contracted amount. Those things are not acceptable and not allowable. We talk about zero operating deficit, the, kind of the biggest misnomer, I think, between local government and the state and federal government is that local government can't run deficits. It's, it's illegal. We have to have a balanced budget, and the other guys don't necessarily have to do that. The state to some degree says they do, but they can take on future obligations in other ways. Counties really have to be able to have a balanced budget, so that's, we are at a, it can be an issue sometimes frankly, because it takes away some of the instruments that you would otherwise have for balancing budgets that the state and federal government use. Capital planning, the six-year capital plan is mandatory. Funding for maintenance and replacement schedules is the highest priority before discretionary projects. One-time funds, revenues of limited or indefinite term must be used for capital projects or one-time operating expenses, not for ongoing core services. And expenditure reduction, if cuts are required, the preferred method is complete elimination of a specific non-mandatory service, not lowering the quality of core mandated programs. So you'll hear sometimes that if, if we don't get X amount of funding, that we're going to have to lower the quality of service. And what we're saying through this budget poll, or the financial policies, is that if that's the way that it goes, then we'd rather get rid of the service rather than have terrible service, you know, if it's non-mandatory.
Results-based.
Yeah, absolutely. Cash debt and authority for indebtedness, treasurer's authority, the treasurer is responsible for cash and investments, these are things that you know. Bank accounts, no department may establish a bank account for public funds without prior knowledge and consent of the treasurer. Daily, this is just the deposit requirements that are required by the R C Ws for the treasurer. Again, deficit financing will not be used to support ongoing operations as we can't. And department heads do not have the authority to commit the county to any indebtedness, including leases, contracts, or long-term debt beyond their current budget authority. Grant acceptance, must be reviewed to ensure the total costs and future local revenue impacts are known and will not be adversely impacted, will, will not adversely impact the county's current expense fund. That just makes sense. And it was something that we just talked about actually with the judge. Right there is a good example. We want to make sure that we're doing things like grant funding and seeking grant funds that do not impact the county's current expense fund. And everybody does a pretty good job on that, by the way, I got to tell you, all of our department heads and elected officials, they, for the most part, they're always looking for grants to be able to, to do that. This is mainly like what happens for, when there's a payroll change or a personnel change, these are things that you know. Personnel action form required, segregation of duties, payroll integrity, this is a big one for me, payroll integrity relies on clear separation of roles. You need the preparers to enter the time and attendance data. Signers review and approve time sheets and reports, and payroll staff conduct a final review for policy and CBA compliance. This one is a big one, because we don't want to, we don't want to have folks that are even capable of being able to take advantage of time. And they say that one of the biggest unknowns in government is time theft, by the way.
I've heard that over and over and over again.
It's very hard to measure. It's hard to measure how much are you losing in time theft, so that's kind of why that's important. Initial accuracy, the department bears responsibility for the initial accuracy of all submitted time sheet data, that's obvious. I don't think I need to go over food and all those items. Here's my summary of key compliance areas, and I'll kind of talk about this. Number five is kind of why we are doing all this, and so that we don't have to tap into the road fund to be able to balance the budget. But what we're looking at is... But what we're looking at is strict compliance to adhere to the adopted fund and departmental category budgets. No new debt, as we've already talked about, capital asset tracking. And an ask-first approach when it comes to a lot of these policies. If an expenditure or personnel action is outside the established guidelines, consult with the auditor's office, HR or this board before proceeding. And the whole idea for all of this is to meet our reserve fund responsibility so that when we don't have times like this in the future where we can't withstand it or we see what's going on around us and it doesn't look real good. The financial outlook for so many of the other counties, I've, I've given examples of counties that are 20, 25, 30 million dollars apart on their preliminary budget and where they think they're gonna end up. And we're not gonna be there. And so good on you gentlemen for having the foresight in the past. But I think this'll kinda keep everything on the up and up. It'll be something that we can plan on for the future, and I think it's something that's worthy of, of your approval. Two comments. The one that you have in front of you are gonna have a couple minor changes. The one I talked about with Bo Beckley and Information Services, kind of a minor thing. And then also, and I wanna, I didn't know that he was, came back in the room, but Council Briggs has really been helpful in being able to get this over the finish line. There was some recommendation to take out some of the language that we actually would be redundant with in our procurement policies and also the ordinance establishing a property manager, so, and the property management ordinance. So a big thank you, I wanna say thank you to the treasurer's office, the auditor's office, the prosecuting attorney's office, Mr. Briggs is intimately involved, Mr. McCart for, for his help and getting this off the ground. Everybody that's reached out and put it, a lot of meaningful work and insight into this. And you know what this is, is this is another reason why, you know, we just got it unpassed in our first audit in a long time with flying colors. This will allow us to keep doing that. Any questions or comments that you might have? Just let me know.
Questions, comments, commissioners?
So I would just, I would just have a, a couple of comments here. I wanna say thank you to, to both of my fellow commissioners for implementing this, this workshop process. We've been doing it for just right at a year and a half now, and I think it's a, it's a good process. I think it has helped Franklin County. And, and to our administrator for the way that he uses these to bring information. And it, it empowers us, knowledge is power. And I think that this process has really been empowering to the Board of County Commissioners and to the, the administration of Franklin County and how it operates. And I think this is an example. Really early as a commissioner, I heard in, in some cases on a weekly basis, we have really bad policy. And so I've heard that over and over again. I agree with that in some cases, and in some cases I don't. I read our, our snowplow policy the first week that I was a commissioner. Craig Erdman, our Public Works and engineer, engineering director, brought me and said, we're gonna get some snow. You should have this so that you know. And so I read through that policy, and I think that policy was dated, I think, 1994. And, and I read through that policy and there was nothing on it that I thought should be changed. He, he did update it to where that it, it had a newer date on it, and he just did some very, very slight tweaks. And just because policy is old does not mean it's bad. However, this process is allowing us to update and clean up and, and have more modern policy. And so thank you to my fellow commissioners and thank you to our administrator and for everybody that has been a part of this process of updating and, and modernizing and, and helping us have better, better and more proper policy. And I'm thankful, I think that some of the decisions that this board has made over the last year, year and a half have been, have been helpful to get us in a position where that we're not in having such a stark contrast with where we're at financially versus where our budget is. And I think that that's been helpful, and I think that we need to continue down this path. And so thank you to each of you and our administrator for his hard work on that. So that's, that's my comments on this.
And I too wanna thank our administrator and the people of the courthouse for working together. This is a team effort. And we have got to be very stringently grip, a grip on these financial funds because as the environment gets worse for the public, we need to be very thoughtful of how we're spending money. And I, again, I wanna thank the other departments that worked with you on putting this together. And I wanna thank my fellow commissioners for leading the way and creating our own group. And we got out of the, the ability for us to use our medical funds as a source of income because that has gotta stop. That has hurt this county dramatically. And we need, and we have set the stage for that, to get that turned around. And I encourage the other departments to please follow our lead. And let's get away from this VIBA contribution that has really hurt our county financially. Every department and every avenue. So again, thanks for coming together, working as a team, making us three commissioners look very good. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. And it's not, it's not hard to, to make you look good, so.
Yes, it is.
You got a nice shirt on, Mr. Commissioner Mullin.
Thank you.
Alright, if there's no other business on this workshop, I will adjourn the workshop.
Public comment.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I'm taking us out of adjournment.
Fast gavel. It's, I don't think there was anybody, so.
Okay. Go ahead, make your comment.
No, no, I would just, we need to allow public comment cuz we're at the end.
Public comment, yes. Well, there's nobody in here from the public. They're all department heads. Alrighty. We done?